Good evening, everyone. And welcome to Carrington School, the Board of Education Workshop. We'll begin this evening with a silent prayer. Commissioner Jason Vanstone, would you please lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Karen Renaud, the principal of Carrington School. This is Kristin Guzdowski, my vice principal. Thank you for being at our school tonight. We're happy to have you.
Our pleasure.
This is going into my third year as principal of Carrington. And in that time, we have implemented some new procedures and practices that have really proved to be effective, and we're really proud of the progress that we see here at school in all grades, in the subject areas of ELA and math, especially on our Smarter Balance Assessment tests. Just briefly, I have a few highlights for you in that area and in math. This is based on students that were meeting or exceeding the grade level. We follow the cohorts from grades four to five in year fifteen, sixteen to sixteen, seventeen. And in math, they made a thirteen point one percent increase. And the cohort in grade from five to six, again, from year fifteen to sixteen and sixteen to seventeen, made a ten point two percent increase in math. And again, that was due to some different procedures and practices that we put in place. And a few highlights in ELA, the cohort, again, from students in grade four to grade five in year fifteen to sixteen and sixteen to seventeen, made a nine point two percent increase. And the students in grades from six to grade seven in the same years was an eight point five percent increase. So we're really proud of that. And we have just completed our beginning of the year testing. There goes our banner. An M-class and I-ready.
It is, too.
Want to just take it down? All right.
It's a beautiful banner.
Go Cougars. But as I was saying, our beginning of the year testing in M-class and I-ready in math and ELA have really been promising, so we're off to a great start. But I just, you know, Kristin and I work so well together, and I couldn't do it without her. But I just have to say that the teachers and the staff here are just so dedicated and committed to their professions. Every student is truly valued, and we believe that every student could achieve at such high expectations and levels. And I have some of my staff here tonight, and I just want to acknowledge them. They're over here, and they...
Great.
We all really just share in the mission and vision of Carrington. And I say it to them, and I probably don't say it enough or express it the right way, but I truly am grateful and blessed every day that I come here and I work with such a great staff. And I consider them not only my colleagues, but my friends, too. So it really is a great place to work, and we truly are Carrington family. And just a bit on that, we have a math, our math coach isn't here tonight, or a reading facilitator, but they're just invaluable in the sense of helping and supporting the teachers and working in our IDTs and seeing really what the teachers need to support them in those meetings in the classrooms and looking at data. And so they really are, you know, a great asset to us in the building. And it really is a collaborative effort every day that we make. And the last thing is, I really believe that our students love being here. We had a ninety-seven percent attendance rate last year, and we received an award from that at our Students' Governance Council Breakfast, and we really are proud of that. And I really believe that the students like to be here. They love to be with the teachers in the classroom. The teachers make it exciting and creative, and they really support the students and really help them to thrive and grow in their areas that they need help with. So again, I'm just very humbled to be the principal here at Carrington. Just moving on. Our district has initiatives, as you know, and this year was focused on social-emotional learning. And we have a couple of projects that we're excited about that we started that focused on, you know, just changing our climate and culture a little bit and creating a stronger sense of community within our building and our school. The first thing is the rock project. And I don't know if any of you came in by the way of that door, but if you have a chance to go out there and see it, it's illuminated at night. And it was a project that was started from a book called Only One You, and it promotes uniqueness and developing an understanding of diversity. And all our students painted rocks, and we have them on display outside, and they're just representative of themselves. And they were very creative. There's a couple slides behind you. You can take a look. But we also had the staff make them as well. So you can just, you know, there's hearts, there's New York Yankees and Boston alike, sadly. No, I'm kidding. But they really, they really were creative. But we had, they were better than we expected, and it is beautiful out there. And so if you have a chance to take a look at it, it really, it was a great project. Our other SEL initiative is our Wingman Project or program. And we do actually have the founder here, Ian Hockley, and he's just going to say a few words regarding the program. And we had the big kickoff on October tenth, and the mayor was here, and Mrs. Bame, our ILD. And it really was a great day. So I'm just going to let you hear him speak on it and how it came to be.
Thanks, Karen, and thank you for having me here this evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ian Hockley. I moved to the States in 2011 with my family. And my son Dylan was one of the children that was lost at Sandy Hook, elementary on twelve fourteen twelve. We started a foundation, Dylan's Wings of Change, in his memory. And in 2014, we were very fortunate to meet two athletics coaches who lived in Middlebury, who'd always professed in their sports program about teaching children how to take care of each other and build a strong group where no one was left behind. So we started a program working with them under the principle of being someone's wingman. And that program was developed for sports clubs. In 2015, we were very fortunate to be introduced to Connecticut Association of Schools, to CAS, and they helped us translate what was a program on the sports field into the classroom and develop into a proper social-emotional learning program. We started working with three schools at that time, most notably New Fairfield Middle School and City Hill Middle School. And they helped us develop not only the program curriculum, but also training the students as leaders. In 2016, we were fortunate to grow to seven schools, one of which was Gil Martin here in Waterbury. As the program grew, we also created a module for dance studios. So now we're touching sports clubs, schools, and dance studios. 2017, the program continued to grow. We now have eighteen schools enrolled in the program. And we're very happy that Reed, Carrington, and Duggan have also joined the Wingman family there. They've all implemented the program. Wingman is student-led and directed. We bring in trainers to work with a group of students and train them as facilitators, and they take the activities that form the core of the program into the classroom. So we're taking workload off the teachers, and we're also putting the student voice into the program. And as part of the training for the student leaders, they talk to the trainer about what it's like to be in their school, what the climate is like, and what they would like to work on. So the program doesn't come in with a prescribed curriculum of what needs to happen at that school, because schools are very different from one school to another. So it's student-led with some very dedicated teachers. Usually, three or four teachers in each school are dedicated to supporting the students and rolling it out. Yes, thank you. There's no charge for the program. The foundation doesn't charge for the program. In fact, we try and help with some of the costs, which is notably the training, the student leaders, and some of the materials needed to get the program off the ground. And really, it's just about the principle of being a wingman. If you think in the Air Force, the wingman is the pilot that's looking out for the rest of the squadron and looking out for danger. And we're trying to instill those same qualities in the students themselves and bring out the very best in them and things they want to work on, such as courage and perseverance and being observant and taking care of each other. We kicked off here in 2017. See some of the slides there. It was a very, very loud, very impactful presentation. We're just looking forward to maintaining that momentum and taking it forward. We shared Dylan's story with the students. He was a little boy who couldn't communicate very well. He couldn't always follow instructions, and so he couldn't often get involved in activities. But if there was someone who would slow down and take the time to explain things to him and help him through things step by step, he could become involved and included. And really, that's the principle of being a wingman. And if Dylan needed it all of the time, and it's fair to say all of us at some point in the day or the year need someone to be there for us, and that's what we're trying to do for the children. It's not about just taking care of your friends. It's being there for anyone that's in trouble. Very grateful to be here, working with Carrington and all the schools in Waterbury, and thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we look forward to every school having a wingman program. Are there any questions for our guest?
Liz, I'm sorry.
Vice President.
How are you? Thank you for the wonderful work you guys are doing. Karen, thank you for the presentation earlier. But I did hear that you guys have some student leaders here, and I think if they are present, we should acknowledge them. Thank you.
And I just, if I may indulge me for a second. Ivan Hernandez is here, my Carrington teacher. Marnie Ford, Eileen McDonald, Carl Brought, Nancy McCullough, Karen Kavanaugh, Elvira Barbosa. That's my Carrington staff. Is there anybody else that I left out? I hope. I'm sorry. And Jerry, our custodian, and Becky, who prepared this lovely food for you. So thank you to everybody. We also have our student, we have Pumas back there, and those are students that are selected in seventh and eighth grade that are, show exemplary characteristics.
Come on over here.
They're very humble, but they do a great job. And they're here, they come on nights when we have parent-teacher events, like, and they guide the teachers to the, I'm sorry, the parents to the classrooms. They say the pledge in the morning and our Carrington mission and vision in the morning for us on the loudspeaker, and they help out whenever's needed. They're very reliable, and they're great kids, and you're going to see them go places far. Not that any of our other kids will go, they're awesome. I have great hopes for every child that comes through this building, and I really believe that, and I know my staff does as well. So thank you.
Keep up the great work.
Let them introduce themselves.
Do you guys want to? Come on up and say your name and introduce yourselves.
Good idea.
Now they're mortified, thanks.
And this is Mrs. Patway. She actually was the originator and the founder of this.
I'm Lila Wiggins, and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Kalen Gorman, and I'm in seventh grade as well.
I'm Cassandra Cruz, and I am in seventh, too.
My apologies. Sarah LaStage is our new library media specialist, and she's here as well. And she actually read the book to every class in the school and led the, was the lead person on the rock project and helped us out with the painting of the rock, so.
Sounds like a great project. Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great job we're doing here, and I just wanted to have you talk a little bit about parent engagement here at Carrington. Are there any parents here tonight?
We do. We have a few parents here tonight. Raise your hand.
All right, great. Now, could you talk about the participation in our governance councils? And what types of activities do we have at Carrington that are assisting with welcoming, creating a welcoming environment in the school for parents?
Well, last year, we focused on the Boost Project, which is bringing in programs into the school for after-school programs for the students. And this year, the Governance Council, we have seven parents on the Governance Council. And I have to say, it is a little bit challenging to have parents volunteer for the year, but we do have seven committed parents. And the focus that we are focusing on is having more parent engagement and having parent nights and setting up different times for them and interest, because we have done like literacy nights, and it's the same core of parents that we get, but we'd like to expand that. And we're hoping that if we do different events, and we're hoping to reach more parents and get them involved and get them to network and get to meet their students' friends and other parents. We had an ice cream social last week, and it was very successful. I think it was one of the, it was over two hundred parents that came out, and I think it was very well attended. We have a new parent liaison that just started with us this year and who actually is a parent in the school as well. She has children that come here, and she's very passionate, and she has some good ideas. And so that's really our focus this year, is just trying to get more parents to come out, because I think it is a great school, and I would like to see more parent involvement and have activities that interest parents to come out. And we have been brainstorming for that. And we have a student of the month, actually, on Monday. And our student of the month this year is focusing on characters, characteristic and character traits. And our first one for October is focusing on honesty. That's the character trait. So it's not just student of the month for academics, but it's working on that character-building trait, so.
Great. Okay. And one last thing is, we're trying to grow from within our teachers. And we have Carrington on the list for the Young Educators Society. So look for that.
Okay.
Because it's Carrington and a few other schools that we want to, you know, try to hone in and see what we could do to gather interest in the teaching profession.
Yes.
Starting at a young, young age. So look for that.
Yeah.
Okay? All right, thank you.
I would welcome that. And I would welcome any ideas that you may have to bring parents in and to get them involved.
Great. Thank you.
That would be great.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much, and we look forward to a great year.
Great. Thank you. Come on by and visit anytime you'd like.
Absolutely. Okay. Next, our couple of policies. A, number 5.50. Commissioner Sweeney?
Okay. 5.50 is a toilet training policy. This was first drafted and approved back in 2012. I think that was before we had the focus we have on early childhood education. We have a number of state and federal grants that do not allow us to refuse a child entrance to the programming simply on the basis of not being toilet-trained. So the committee spent two sessions going over this and has arrived at the policy that you now see here, which simply states Waterbury Public Schools welcome entry to the early childhood program for all three- and four-year-olds. There is an expectation that children will arrive at the program toilet-trained. For children who have not completed their training, a planned approach will be developed for both school and home, collaboratively implemented by the child's family, classroom aide, and/or paraprofessional. And Darren Schwartz, maybe you can give you some background on what that collaboration would look like.
Good evening.
Good evening. Chief Academic Officer, Darren Schwartz.
Yes. So thank you for that, Commissioner Sweeney. Again, this is a policy that's being supported by the Office of Early Childhood, who's asked us to not deny children based on normal developmental processes when we're receiving state funding. What that process would look like in terms of collaboration is, obviously, our preschool assistants and preschool teachers and preschool paraprofessionals all versed in developmental processes and age-based growth. But when it comes to toileting and toilet training, if we do have a student that comes in, the collaboration has to include the family, because the family has to support the education in this area. So the family, the teaching assistant and/or paraprofessional within the room will come up with a plan and implement that at the school and buttress that with support at home, providing literature and information and reporting back and forth between school and home. Typically, we see, from last year, we saw students come in with, a few were learning how to be toilet-trained, and it took anywhere between two to three months to complete the training and to finish that off. And so we anticipate that to continue to happen as students may come in who are still learning and developing in that area. And if not, that would lead to other discussions. If the child seems to be having difficulty, it could lead to other discussions regarding possible developmental delays, physical issues the child may be having, and so we address those as those come forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Thierio.
To say that I received numerous phone calls over this issue is an understatement. I have bombarded, bombarded with calls regarding this. I did take the time to go up to Drake School and to meet with one of the teachers, and I got several phone calls from other teachers who say that the effectiveness of the program is really going down, because they're spending most of their time doing the toilet training of numerous kids that are in the program. We had a policy before that said, didn't prefer that kids were toilet-trained, and said they must be toilet-trained. I can understand the motivation for this one, because this change in policy, because of the change in state and federal grants and the rules and regulations. But that being said, I think we ought to also consider giving these individual classes that have large amounts of these students some additional help. If we're going to say that the aides and paraprofessionals are now going to do the diaper-changing and the toilet-training, it's nice to have it collaborative with the parents, and that's where it should be. And I can understand some of the kids having difficulty, and they may need further assistance with the teachers and the parents and so forth. I don't know what's going to happen with this, but I am hearing from the rank and file that this is working out disastrously. I heard from a teacher, a teacher of sixteen years, another teacher of thirty-six years. They need more help. They're spending an inordinate amount of time on students that need toilet-training. So I think this needs to be thought out a lot better than it has been. And I think you should go to the rank and file, should go to the teachers and talk to them. I understand they may come down here next week and speak to us. So that being said, I wonder if there wasn't another way to resolve this by providing additional assistance to the classroom teachers for three, four, and five-year-olds that have this problem with toilet-training. Thank you.
Can I?
Yes.
So all of the classrooms that have three-year-olds, there isn't a single class, last count is of two weeks ago, that at any student at any time, there weren't more, there were no more than three students per class. None of them are in diapers. They're in pull-ups. And every single teacher that's had the three-year-olds added in does have an additional assistant in their classroom.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Stango.
Thank you, President Brown. Just a few questions.
Sure.
Mr. Schwartz. When the change has to take place, for example, the diapers, the pull-ups, the wipes, whatever, where do they come from?
Where does what come from?
Pardon?
Where does what come from?
The diapers, the wipes, the pull-ups.
So if it's a co-taught classroom, it could come from the special education budget. They do have a preschool line for that. If not, it comes from the school-based budgeting process. Each school gets a certain allotment per child, including preschool children.
And if a change needs to take place, where does that change take place?
So there's a few different places. It matters the building, and it matters the location. Sometimes in the bathroom, if there are tables set up there. There are changing tables that have been ordered, although it is not a NIAC standard that you must have a changing table for students, that you could use it, any hard surface such as a cot or other areas within the classroom. It really depends from school to school and class to class, depending on where they deem fit. Changing tables are being ordered for all classrooms, even though it hasn't been requested at all, we just would feel more comfortable that they have that option if they choose to do so.
Okay. Does the para who does the changing, does that para need written permission from the parent to be able to do this?
No.
Does not need written permission? So, I mean, there's, we are covered with that situation, is not an issue that someone is changing their child?
An issue as in, if they just change the child and put them into a clean pull-up? No, there is not an issue.
All right. Mr. Schwartz, how many people, how many kids do we have in a classroom that may require changing, on average? I mean, are we talking, first of all, a classroom of the three, four-year-old group? How many would be in that classroom total?
Could be eighteen in the morning, eighteen in the afternoon would be the highest scenario possible.
Okay. And what would you say the percentage of children that have to be trained, coming into the classroom, have to be, are not trained yet and need to be changed?
Two or three at a time. It could be, three is the highest total from the last count that we had two weeks ago at any one time in a classroom. Eighteen, eighteen total in the system.
Okay. So a classroom that has eighteen students in it, possibly three of those need to be tended to?
Yes.
Okay. You already answered, or I think Commissioner Sweeney did, we didn't have a problem with denying access if you're not trained, but now the state is requiring that because of grants?
The state has always required it. We did not adhere to what the state administered. It was brought to the state's attention through the school readiness liaison, through our policy. The Office of Early Childhood, Angie Obrinow, wrote a specific email that said, denying children education based on a developmental process such as toilet-training is against state regulation, and it goes against the grant itself, any state-funded grants.
So if we, if this was to fail on... So, if this was to fail on vote, what would be the consequences to this district?
That would be a question for the State Department and Office of Early Childhood.
The paras who do the changing, that part of their job description that they are required to do that?
Toileting and hygiene is in their job description.
Okay. But a teacher would never be required to do that?
As of right now, we rely on the paraprofessionals and the classroom assistants to do the training, the toileting.
How can you say "as of right now"?
Because as of, prior to this, there was some teachers pitching in and doing it if they felt necessary. I think that to say that they would never do it is a little bit of a stretch. I think that most teachers, if there was an issue, for example, para gets pulled from the class, something happens to the assistant, all of a sudden, a child is in need, and for whatever reason, someone is not going to be back in the classroom for maybe several minutes, I think most teachers might step in, but as a rule of thumb, teachers are not changing. And we don't expect them to change. We expect this to be the assistants and the paraprofessionals. It's not, we want our teachers focused on instruction and other developmental processes, not on changing pull-ups.
Okay, I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty of it much, but how, if there's, class of 18 children, and three of them are known to be, have, not toilet-trained, but if they have pull-ups on, and if incident takes place, how do we know the incident has taken place? Does the para have to periodically check?
I can't answer that for every child. I'm sure it's different in many different cases, but just having a five and seven-year-old at home, that was, they were potty-trained when they were two, usually at that stage, typically, they will inform the adult in the classroom that the diaper has soiled. Periodic checks, I don't think usually, don't occur. Usually, children at that age are pretty good at informing the adult in the classroom. However, if there was a case where a child is hesitant to do so, I am sure that the assistants and the paraprofessionals have caught on to that trend, and may ask the child quietly outside, "Do you need a change?" Do they go inspecting the pull-ups physically? I would venture to say no, but I don't want to answer that, not knowing every single situation. I think that the children usually inform the adult.
I was just asking that for, because looking for disruption of what's going on in the normal flow of the class, and, you know, that's the only reason. Now, in the policy, it mentions that there'll be a planned approach with the parents and the paras. Is this planned approach after a period of time? Is it readdressed? How do we know, what's the assessment of that planned approach, that it's working or not working?
So, there's a few things. One, I've asked the interim preschool supervisor, Amy Sims, to do a revig of training for all pairs and assistants for the upcoming Professional Development Day, including the approach. I think each individual trial that matters where they are in the development. So, if you're coming in with zero, zero potty-training experience, that approach is very different than a child who's coming in who is just having maybe a few accidents now and then. And so, I don't want to not answer your question, but it does matter, this is a development, and it does take a few months to go through. I think that weekly periodic checks with the home and the school communicating about the progress is the best way to go on each individual case, but, you know, there's not like a one answer fits all. Each child is really in a different spectrum based on previous education and training in this area.
So, if I can just, wondering aloud here, when the child is registered, suppose the child is registered during the summer for classes to begin in September, and the child is not toilet-trained at that point, I think that we need to, who's ever doing the registering, be strong in suggesting that you've got two months before this child starts school. Really do all you can in the home to get this child ready for school. I think that has to be really, the parents need to really be aware of that.
I've directed the Office of Early Childhood to not only ask the question, but also to provide parents with strategies to take home with them, and to encourage just that.
Okay, thank you. And just to wrap it up one more, I'm sorry you take so much time here.
That's okay. Obviously, you've put a lot of thought into this.
Right. And just in wrapping it up here, the internet tells me that 98% of kids are trained by the age of three. So, 98% are trained, that means two are not trained, 2% are not trained. And the average of toilet-training is, takes place at about 30 months, and that training should begin around 25 months. So, I think if all of that was taking place, I don't think we'd have an issue by the time school starts and the student is three, I would hope.
I would have to check the primary source on that, but I'd also say that if the child was not getting any sort of training, then that would probably throw that statistic off. I'd also say that three is a wide range, so I'm not sure if that means by the age of three, or by the end of being three, the 11-month span there.
All right. Thank you for your answers. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, going on, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner O'Farrell.
Anyone else want to speak for the first time?
I don't think so. I think we kind of, okay, Commissioner Vanstone, after Commissioner O'Farrell.
Just quickly, I won't, Charles asked a number of my questions, so that's fine, we won't repeat it. While I'm not 100% comfortable with this, and I think, you know, sometimes we as a district and a government take a lot of the things that parents are really supposed to be doing away from them in the hopes of bettering things, you know, this troubles me a little bit. I am glad, however, through the committee process, that I think we got to a better policy than I think we started with. You know, I like that the language is still pretty clear, that there's an expectation that children come ready. So while that's not, we're going to lock the door and kick them out, it's probably the next step. And I think, to Charles's point, that, you know, I think that needs to be delivered, that, you know, it's, if you want your kid to succeed as best they can in the class, we need all the adults in there kind of pulling in the same direction for educational resources, not only for toileting. So I'm glad that through the committee work, we were able to tighten up this language, and I wanted to thank the committee for that work. I think that's all I got. Thanks, Charles. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Farrell.
Well, what we've really done here is, we have negated the policy, and we have created a new procedure, which we would have done anyways, a collaborative, cooperative plan with the parents, would be something that we would do anyway. So we're just kind of stating the obvious here. Congratulations on your children being potty-trained, Mr. Schwartz. I'm sure not all of our kids have the luxury that your kids have. But that being said, some of the teachers have actually contacted the Board of Health regarding a number of issues. Number one, what do you do with the soiled diapers? Number two, is there a private area that these kids can be changed? If my son had this problem, my daughter had this problem, I certainly wouldn't want their diaper or their pull-up pulled down in the middle of the classroom, then pulled up. I'd expect it to be in a private area. Even small children deserve privacy. It's my understanding that there were no changing tables in a lot of places, and you answered that question by saying that changing tables would be ordered. I certainly hoped that it would be in a room that could be locked, where people, not in a regular bathroom, where people could go in and out at will. That would be another concern. The Board of Health refuses to get involved in this thing, as they do occasionally. They say it's not our domain, it's the Board of Education's domain. Well, if you were the teacher, you might argue with that point. So I really wonder if all these things are going to be resolved. It doesn't seem to be a huge problem when you look at the numbers. It's only a huge problem when you're in the classroom, and you've got three of these kids that are constantly in distress in terms of soiling their pants, or other problems with going to the bathroom. Then it becomes a huge problem. I know you said that there are additional people within the classroom. That's true. There actually are two at Driggs. But I wonder, as this problem continues, if we're going to address these other situations with regard to privacy, you said something about the changing tables, in an area where we could go into the bathroom, and we could lock the door. I'd certainly never want a child to be diaper-changed, or their diapers removed and so forth, within the classroom. I think that's way above what we should be doing. So, hopefully, these problems will be resolved. I'm sure you're going to hear from the WTA regarding this, and I wonder if I was as prepared as Charlie Stengel was, Commissioner Stengel was, if I would have been allowed to continue, because so often I'm kind of cut short. But good for you, doing the research, Commissioner Stengel. I'm kind of just talking from the cuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. The next policy, Commissioner Sweeney, Bylaws of the Board, Public Meeting Section C, number 9010. So, Section C has to do with the meetings of the board. Currently, the policy reads, the board shall hold its regular meetings on the first and third Thursday of each month, except in July and August, when meetings shall be held only on the first Thursday. The president of the board shall have the discretion to reschedule meetings, which, under the above formula, would otherwise fall on a holiday. In discussing both reducing the number of meetings held by the board, and using our committees effectively to bring forward resolutions to the board, we discussed it, and we are recommending that the new language, which says, the board shall hold its regular meetings on the third Thursday of each month. The president of the board shall have the discretion to reschedule meetings under the above formula if conflicts arise. So, we are dispensing with the second meeting in a month. We can still continue, and we discussed, although it is not a part of the bylaws, the workshop, in reducing that to one workshop a month on the first Thursday of the month, and that that will give us some time in between to review our packets, gather information, ask questions, and be ready to vote at a voting meeting on the third Thursday of the month. So that is where we're at. That is the resolution. Commissioner O'Farrell.
I'm just wondering, where's the above formula?
The board shall hold its regular meetings on the third Thursday of the month. That is the above formula.
Okay, I didn't see that as a formula. I thought there was something where it's just, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Farrell, then Commissioner Vanstone?
Yeah, I have thought long and hard about this. I will try to be brief. At a time when we are preaching parent involvement, parent engagement, voter participation, representing the voter, representing our various communities throughout the city of Waterbury, looking for inclusion of parents, guardians, aunts, uncles, and so forth, this would result in all of those people only being able to address the board one time a month. One time. Sure, it would make the meetings shorter, sure. If I were selfish, I'd love to have just two meetings, and not, I enjoy listening to the parents, myself. I get something out of it, each and every one, when they speak, because they have a kind of an axe to grind. If I had my way, I'd keep the meetings the way they are, and not only would I let parents talk before the regular meeting, I'd let them talk before the workshop meeting too. Why not? What's wrong with that? You want to make a change? Make it more inclusive? Make it more open? Make it more welcoming? But no, we want to go to this new policy of two meetings a month and one board meeting where the parents and the public can talk. The public are the people that elect us. Is your vote tonight going to be the price of patronage? Is your vote tonight going to be, because somebody told you to vote this way, you're going to vote this way? I hope not, because I hear over and over again about us representing the community. The community has spoken, north, south, east, and west. We have a tremendous volume of business that we have to handle during the Board of Education year. Tonight, it happens to be a little light, but most of the time, it's not. I can remember times coming to meetings, and Charlie and others here can remember coming to meetings, where we started at 5:30, and we didn't get out till 11:00. So now, all of a sudden, we're going to take that meeting, and we're going to put it all in, we're going to put 10 pounds of work in a five-pound bag. I don't see, I mean, as I said, if I were a selfish person, and I'm not, I knew what I was getting into when I got into this. I spent hundreds and hundreds of hours off of this table, off of this meeting, doing reports, keeping track of statistical data with regard to the test scores, the attendance, the population. I go to the meetings, I conscientiously go to the meetings, I type out the meetings. I don't take a little scribble and put it at the bottom of the committee meeting as being done and complete, two or three sentences. I just did the report on the building and grounds, it was four pages long. I'm not doing that to pat myself on the back. I'm doing that because to be a board commissioner and to take it conscientiously requires a tremendous amount of work and effort and diligence. And now, we're going to cut it down, going to cut the, by cutting it down, you think you're going to cut the work effort? Now, in terms of the committee meetings, I find the committee meetings, just the way they are, to be extremely effective. And if we say we're going to have less meetings, and we're going to make the committee meetings, subcommittee meetings, more effective, I don't think that's true. I don't think those subcommittee meetings will meet, or the chairman of the subcommittees will meet any more than they currently do. I think this is a fallacy, I think this is a sham, and I think if it passes, I think the public ought to take a good look at those on the board that are running, and say, hmm, are those people really representing my interest? So I would say, in the future, keep it the way it is, and possibly expand the opportunity for the public to speak at our regular meetings, and possibly even our workshop meetings. Yes. Yeah, it would take longer, yes, but that's why you're here. You were elected. You were elected to work longer, to work harder, to let the people get up there and represent the particular grievances that they have. represent the particular grievances that they have. Well, I think that's about it. I almost lasted as long as you did, Commissioner Stengel, without being interrupted. Thank you.
Commissioner Vanstone, then Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I think a lot of the things Commissioner Thierio says are true, I think his conclusion is completely wrong. I believe in the idea of interaction between this board and parents and the community, and I know that, at least on my two Thursdays off, that gives me the opportunity to go where the parents are. How many things are we invited to every month that we'd all love to be part of, except they all happen to be at 6 o'clock on a Thursday? And as much as I love Danielle and Maggie, who are our two continuous speakers who come and voice their opinions every time, it saddens me that we don't have more. So I believe that if the goal is better parent engagement, if the goal is meeting with the community more, if they're not coming to us, let's go to them. That's my philosophy on that. As far as longer meetings, I don't necessarily think a longer meeting is a more efficient meeting or a better meeting. I've gotten things done in meetings that last three minutes that were more effective and more productive than meetings that took 16 hours. Length does not necessarily mean things were done. And we're all human beings. When we're an hour and six of a meeting, are we functioning at our best? Probably not. So if the goal for this board for point two is to be efficient and to do good things for the district, I think more smaller, shorter meetings through the committee process is better than a five-hour workshop followed by a three-hour regular meeting. We've seen it in the last few months since we last talked about this, both in the curriculum and in policy, where we've had two chairs who have actively called meetings and actively put work in at the committee level, brought it here. So we've proven to ourselves that if we care to do it, we can make the committee process work. But to do the committee process and then a workshop and then a regular meeting, what that does, it eats up time, so we get our long meetings, but we don't accomplish any. We talk about paving roads, we talk about elevators, we talk about roofs, that's what we talk about. We don't talk about achievement enough, we don't talk about curriculum enough, we don't talk about the things I think could make this district better, because we're inundated with this other stuff. We have more fruitful conversations and get things done in the committee level than we do here. And I think if you say that's not true, you're kidding yourself. So if we can continue that committee process, which I think we can, and expedite it without having a déjà vu Groundhog Day here at the workshop level, which is what we had tonight, that could have freed up this last 40 minutes of talking about what we just talked about for something about maybe Carrington stats, we could have learned more about those cohorts and what those exact plans were that they did to bump those kids up 9% and 10%. This board can do better, and I don't believe that changing from one regular meeting and one workshop from the system we have now actually decreases anything. I believe we'll actually end up doing more work, and we will have more time to talk about stuff. And if this board wants to grant the public the ability to speak in committee meetings, that's fine by me. But I don't think changing this setup, the way it's written about here, does anything but potentially allow this board to be more efficient and more productive. So unless our goal is to be less efficient and less productive, I think this is the way to go. I've been a proponent of it from the beginning. You know, I serve on a lot of boards and I work in business. We are about as inefficient as it gets. And being inefficient, just because that's the way it's always been, is a pretty terrible reason to remain inefficient. And these are our bylaws. If a year from now, this has all gone to pot, so you know what? It was a failed experiment, let's go back to the old way. But I think this is the right policy for this board if we are truly interested in talking about the important things in our meeting and not just the day-to-day business, which ends up eating up most of our meetings. The only other thing I would add, I thought there was a point to be added at the end about a General Roberts Rules of Order will govern our meetings. Was I incorrect in that?
Yeah, I don't recall it, but we can add it.
Okay. I think most of the committee always thought it was in it and it never was.
I thought it was, but yeah, I thought it was.
It's not. So even though I think we've all been operating under that, if we could just add item whatever it is, I, J, K, to the end, I would like to amend the bylaws to state that Roberts Rules also runs these meetings.
So we could do that next week at the meeting?
Yeah.
Vice President?
Thank you.
Vice President, and then Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, President, through you. I think Jason hit it quite eloquently, and I really don't want to add too much to that because I think he hit all the points that I was thinking as well. I think we spent a lot of time on number two, talking about number two, that it took up most of this meeting. I will say this, you know, what we have to fear, and when we talk... I think this is... Initially, when we... This first was brought up a while back, I wasn't in favor of it, because it frankly did look like another, a day off. However, in speaking to several commissioners and listening to their viewpoints, I changed my mind, and then I realized, you know, it's true. One of the things that I fear, and I fear for you other commissioners and even the candidates that are running, is meeting burnout. I'm a chair of like three different committees. We meet every Thursday. Then they say, "Hey, can you meet on Monday? Can you meet on Tuesday? Can you meet on Wednesday?" I'm sorry, but I work full-time, I have young kids, I'm involved in other committees. I can't have meetings every day after work and not have a life. And so, yes, I value parents' engagement, we encourage parents to come to the board meetings, but it's true. I speak to more parents outside of board meetings than I do at board meetings, and that is where real work gets done. You may not see the work, the public may not see the emails that, or the phone calls that we make advocating or supporting the parents' concerns, but they are being done. And so, I will support this change. I think Jason hit the nail on the head perfectly. I think we could be more efficient, more effective in this. Unfortunately, my term is over November 30th, so I won't benefit from this if it does move forward, but I will say the candidates, they will benefit from it. And I think much more work, more better work, will get done with this setup than it has been in the past. And don't let anything else fool you. Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you. Well, okay, I'm going to hit this at a different angle. As I recall, I've been on this board for 12 years. So as I recall, the first order of business after an election are the bylaws. That's the first thing that the board votes on, approval of the bylaws. So my question is, we have gone back and forth with this, pursued it, dropped it, forgot about it, talked about it. My question is, why now? In about three weeks, we are going to have an election, five of us, okay, as prescribed by our bylaws, where they may or may not be a change. So my question is, why are we doing this now? If I were a new member coming on the board, knowing that this is the first order of business once I was elected, my question would be, why are you not allowing me to make that decision? Why are you trying to make that decision for me? If we have toyed around with this for the period of time that we have, then I think we are disrespecting those who are maybe new, reelected to the board. Every two years, five members are up for election. So I question the timing on this. Next thing I question is, why Thursdays? Why not Mondays? Why not Tuesday meetings? Thursdays, as a lot of us are finding out, or have found out, is that everything is held on Thursday, okay? Generally, the thought was, if you change it to Thursday meetings, Board of Ed, then you could attend the Board of Alderman meeting or whatever meetings. But everything is held on the Thursday now. So if you're going to change something, why not change the night that we have it? We originally started having our... We had Monday, meetings on Mondays. Why not go back to that? So why not address that? Now, let's talk about the committee meetings. As I have professed, because I am a recipient of it, the selection process, as outlined in our bylaws, there's an issue with it. I have an issue with it. It's not fair. Going to committee, I agree with that. We can, we can get a lot done in committee, but once we select, have the selection process done fairly, but if it's not going to be done fairly, I am not going to go along with it. That's the third reason why I'm against it. Now, we act as if we don't have anything, this board doesn't have... I mean, the agenda's very short tonight. I'm informing the public that that's not true. We have a lot of issues that we have to deal with. Arrests, test scores, family engagement, which is, the state of family engagement in Waterbury is in turmoil, turmoil right now in Waterbury. So we have a lot of issues that we need to deal with. I am for efficiently run meetings. I am for that, if we promise to do that. Okay? But if we don't promise to do that, we can, we can have a half a meeting and we still will not accomplish anything. So I am not for this. I'm not for it, again, because why are we doing it now? I think we're shortchanging those who are running for the Board of Education, their chances to change things. It's the first order of business after the election. Secondly, why Thursdays? Why don't we change it to Monday? Why don't we change it to another night? And the committee meeting, excuse me, the committee selection process, I have issue with that. And in addition, while we're on the subject of committees, our meeting minutes are horrible, and I hope that we will look at some other way to have more detail, some detail, in our committee meetings. So I am not against it, not, I am not for this at all.
Commissioner Vanstone.
I'll pass.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Sweeney. And please, let's leave our comments to the, to the actual revised bylaws before us. I think we're getting off the topic a little bit.
I don't think we are.
I have been, I guess, the lucky recipient at my committee meetings of having parents attend on occasion, thank you. Other commissioners who are not on the committee attend. Karen, you call in sometimes on committees that you're not on. So I think there's ample opportunity even for people to participate at the committee The decision to do, to bring this forward as a resolution for Thursdays was the decision of the committee, was not anyone on the committee who suggested Mondays or any other day. This was a suggestion of the committee, that is, the function of the committee, to bring forward the resolution that the committee agrees upon for board approval. It is the bylaws of the board. If anyone along the way wants to change a bylaw, all they have to simply do is request the committee take a look at it, that it be brought before the board, and that the board vote in favor of changing the bylaw, just as we're doing now. There's nothing felonious in the timing of this. I was asked to look at it again by a number of the committee members and by the chair. So here we are. Meeting minutes are governed by state sunshine laws and Roberts Rules, which say that the minutes should contain the attendance of the committee, members in attendance, the time the meeting starts, what votes were taken, and what time the meeting adjourns. That's the requirement for minutes. So I'm in support of this. I think that committee meetings will be more effective. I think workshops will be more effective. I think regular meetings will be more effective because we will increase the focus and we will hear the voice that we have heard from board members and from the public to focus on those things that address student achievement in this district. That's where our focus needs to be. For too long, there are too many other things outside that focus. We need to get not just more efficient, but more focused on what our role is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Thierio?
Well, first of all, Roberts Rules of Order kind of permeates all of our meetings, whether they're committee meetings or otherwise. As a matter of fact, when we go to our regular meetings, the president is not supposed to talk to any of the topics. Occasionally, she does, and we let her get away with it, but technically, when we look at Roberts Rules of Order, she should recuse herself, turn the meeting over to the vice president, and then talk on that topic. And all the time that topic is discussed, the vice president would be in charge of the meeting. So I know people look at me as being a little cantankerous once in a while and wanting to kind of put a choke collar on me. I don't blame them, but that, that's still, I still will operate and always have within the parameters of Roberts Rules. I'm glad to see that democracy is alive and well at this meeting. I'm glad to see that people have a divergent opinion and have an opinion one way or another. I think that's great. I agree with Commissioner Harvey. The way she was slammed and cut off from her committees and cut off from every single chairmanship of the committee, I think was a disaster. For whatever reason it took place, it did happen. And I think she's absolutely right that in the future, when we reelect our new committees, that they should be done equitably and fairly on the basis of somewhat of seniority. So you, Commissioner Harvey, have my 100% support with regard to that.
Thank you.
And we all know the pathology of what happened there and why it happened without delineating it. And we also know the reason why we changed our meetings from Monday to Thursday. It wasn't the committee that did that, it was the committee members and the chairman of the committee that were told the administration wanted to attend the Board of Alderman meetings as well as the Board of Education meetings, and they were both on Monday night. And how often do we see the administration at a Thursday meeting? Hardly ever. And I'm not saying the administration, or implying the administration is not doing a good job, that's not the point. The point is, we changed our meetings from Monday to Thursday. By having two meetings as opposed to four, that will make us more effective. Okay, I heard the other speakers speak, I agree with their right to disagree, and I agree with their analysis of the situation from their standpoint, but I don't agree. I still maintain that we should have four meetings the way we have, and those meetings we should extend to the workshop meetings so that the public can speak. I would agree that most of the committee meetings, the minutes are deplorable, with the exception of my committee, where the minutes are impeccable. Not slapping myself on my back again, but somebody's got to say it. If you want to see the way the minute should be done at a committee meeting, check If you want to see the way the minutes should be done at a committee meeting, check my committee, and you'll see. I even include Karen Harvey attends the meeting by phone. I even include her comments over the phone.
Thank you.
So, there should be some sort of a format in terms of what's said, instead of having three or four words at the bottom of the page. So, democracy is alive and well. I talked -- I spoke about the selection process. Maybe it might be a good idea if the people that are interested in various committees put their names in and person that has the most seniority be at least considered. But, whatever you do, I'm not going to vote, I'll never, I never vote to shorten the meetings. I know the other people, and they had good rationales for their thought. I'm not faulting that. Very good rationales for their thought. And maybe they're right. But, I thought I had pretty good rationale for my thought, too. So, as we go forward, let your conscience be your guide. And think of the public in general. And know, and know that the public will only be allowed to speak one time a month under this new, I want to call it a gerrymendered process. Because someone gave the elbow to somebody, somebody else gave the elbow to somebody, and all of a sudden, we have a policy meeting just before the election. And I also agree with Commissioner Harvey on that. What's the big rush? What's the big rush here? Why can't we wait till after the election and let the new board members decide, have their conscience in terms of, you know, having their, you know, having some skin in the game, so to speak? They're out there working hard. We know what it's like, the five of us that aren't running. We know what it's like to pound the pavement. We know what it's like to go to the meetings and various things. We know. And there are germane points that the other speakers that spoke against, for this, and I'm against it, have made. And I say kudos to them. Democracy is alive and well. Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you. Could we, this is non-consent. We put this on, leave this off of the consent calendar?
Okay, for next meeting.
For next meeting, please.
It is non-consent. It is a change in bylaws, and it has to be heard two times. This is your first time hearing it tonight.
Okay. But, I'm just saying, I understand the explanation. I don't need the explanation. I'm just asking that it be non-consent.
Yeah. It is non-consent by Robert's rules.
Well, again, that's what I'm asking for. Don't need the explanation.
Okay. Moving on.
I have a question about that. This is not a meeting. Does it have to be two consecutive meetings or two?
No, it just has to be heard by the whole board.
Twice.
Twice.
Because if you check Robert's rules, it's two meetings. This isn't a meeting.
Two hearings.
And we've determined we're not run by Robert's rules.
Clearly. Clearly.
No, but we said we are.
It's not in the bylaws.
Not in the bylaws currently. I want to add it in. Sorry.
We can clarify that. And if it's two official voting meetings, then we would have to bring it up at the next meeting.
I know I'm right.
Yeah.
Point of order. Point of order, Madam Chair. Then, if it's two actual meetings, it would have to be held after the election.
After the election. Bingo.
Perfect.
Madam Chair, I do, I did pull the rules, Robert's rules for bylaws, be more than happy to get them to you. But, it does say two hearings.
Okay. All right. We'll clarify that, because we want to make sure we're, you know, we're doing, following the protocols. Okay.
And I did supply those to the board, to the committee.
Okay. We'll get that information to everybody. Committee on School Facilities and Grounds. Any questions? Committee on --
I'll just give you.
Commissioner Thierio.
Just give you a brief report. My report will go to the Clerk of the Board. And by the way, these are my meeting notes. One, two, three, four. And the only point I want to make here is, at our meeting, we had a thorough discussion of profit, nonprofit organizations, the fee schedule, the various types of projects that we're currently working on, as well as the summer projects. I'll give that to the Clerk of the Board. She'll pass it out to you either by hard copy and email. And I want to congratulate and thank all the members of the committee, including Commissioner Harvey, that relentlessly follows all those committee meetings via telephone. And we had a very, very productive meeting. And kudos to Mr. Brinker and Mr. Sullivan, our new school inspector, who has done an absolutely phenomenal job in keeping track of our schools. And the condition of our schools is tremendously, tremendously improved. We have had 40 years of absolute neglect in our schools that have been rectified in a few short years, thanks to Mr. Cross, thanks to Mr. Sullivan, thanks to Mr. DiAgostino, and thank you to the mayor also for putting some muscle behind it. You look at our schools now, and, you know, this is a brand-new school, so we don't expect too many maintenance issues here. But, some of the other schools, like, you know, Washington and Hopeville and so forth, those schools constantly have issues. And kudos to you, Mr. Brinker. And kudos to you and the President of the Board for saving us $4.5 million on the roofing project at Westside Middle School. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. This is, we're still on facility?
Yes.
Okay. Once again, requesting waivers. I don't know, you know, I know that we're taking some of this out of our hands to some degree, but again, requesting waivers, if they're not a nonprofit, even though we don't say a nonprofit, do we learn anything of what the event is before we say yes or no to giving away our properties? There's three requesting waivers this week. One is a friend to this board, very well-known group, and obviously have no problem with that. In fact, one of those is the Thanksgiving Community Dinner, which each year Commissioner Hernandez and I work at, volunteer at. But, the two other organizations, I don't know what these activities are. One says Educator Training Community Forum. What is that? And we're going to waive almost $1,000. Another says Ability Beyond Arts and Recreation Program, $1,300. What is it? So, do we just not care and because they checked the box that said request waiver, regardless of what these forums may be and what the agenda is or the forum syllabus, we just let it go? I mean, who's asking these questions? Because on the forum, even as I scroll down to the forum, you get nothing. You get nothing. And I'm not going to give up on this part about giving away our facilities for free. I mean, it's just, I don't, I don't get it. We can't afford it. I mean, not only can't we afford it, when we pay our janitors or any other facility personnel to be there on a weekend, time and a half, double time, whatever it is, we're paying them, then when we do charge somebody, the money doesn't even come into our bank account. It goes to the city, not to us. So, we're paying the overtime, and we don't get the money. You know? And then, when the schools are damaged, which I don't want to hear that they're not, we pay to fix them. So, what are these groups using our facilities for? And we need to know. I have no idea what these two groups are doing.
I think, Mr. Brinker, could you shed some light for us, or?
I can provide an answer. I don't know if it's going to shed much light, Madam President, but thank you. Good evening. You're correct. The form that we use doesn't provide more information than you've seen, at least since I've been here. We did discuss it at our committee meeting, along with the change in the fees, along with biannual approval of people who want to use the facility. So, one group doesn't take it for the whole year, take the whole school for the whole year. But, those are things that we haven't changed yet, that we're in the process. We're redeveloping the form. I've met with Ms. McCaslin twice on it to come up with a form that we can get to you, to get out to the committee, Commissioner Thierio. And then, we'll address all those other issues. I agree, we should know more about it than we don't.
And I'm going to, I'm going to be straightforward here. And I'm probably going to get myself in trouble.
Thank you.
I guess I'm used to getting in trouble. One of these groups, I've been to their events, I've seen their social media, and quite honestly, a lot of their stuff offends me. You know, I've actually deleted them from my version of social media because of some of the rhetoric that they put out. But, we're going to go give them a building for free?
Well, they've requested it. It's come up under the current process. You can always say no.
Well, can we? I mean, when I've tried to take, I've tried in the past to take a single group off of this and was told I can't do it.
If you tell me now, then I can write up the votes in the agenda next week and separate.
Well, okay, then. I will, I will see you after the meeting and let you know which one I want to take off. Thank you. Because I have been told in the past I can't do it. So, thank you.
Commissioner Thierio.
Commissioner Van Stone is correct. At the meeting, we did discuss with Mr. Brinker about taking the process from ground zero and coming up with a new form and reviewing all of the profit and nonprofits, especially the nonprofits, looking at those as grandfathered in and making sure they're still nonprofits. I also think there's another fly in the ointment or wrinkle on the sheets with regard to the use of our buildings by various political organizations. I want to make sure that we strictly adhere to that because we can't even have any political organizations go in there and use our copy machine for, to copy one single piece of paper or mail anything or do anything else politically. So, I hope that the people that are using or requesting our buildings have been properly vetted so that we adhere strictly to the political process of using our buildings for political purposes. So, I won't go into detail there, but I did request that of the Clerk of the Board. And I know there is a state law with regard to the use of school facilities and grounds with regard for political purposes. And we'll get a copy of that and maybe examine it.
I can answer your question, Commissioner. I checked with the Corporation Council today. It was not a request from the Office of the Mayor. It was a request from the Waterbury Observer. It was just facilitated through that office. And yes, we are able to provide our facilities for a debate of that type that's listed.
Okay. Then, that's fine. Then, change the name of the person that's making the request.
I will.
That's all. That's all. You know, I don't have any problem with it. I know that they need a debate. I need the good, but, you know, if it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's a duck.
I'll have the name changed.
So, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to get any muddy of the water, so to speak, here. So, that, you know, and it's supposed to be a 15-day, and it wasn't a 15-day, it was only a 10-day. So, you know, we need some clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brinker. Okay. Next is superintendent's notification to the board. And we do have a --
Madam President? I'm sorry. I'm sorry to go back to that, but you reminded me when you said that, or I think you didn't, Commissioner Thierio. That, the event that I think you're speaking of, it actually will happen before our next meeting.
Yes, it will.
So, okay. So, if I had, if I wanted to pull that one.
I requested that be pulled already.
Monday, 30.
So, are you telling us we need consensus tonight?
If, if, if the event is being held before our next weekend, yes.
It's Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken.
It's Monday, Monday, the 30.
Has the, has the person or the group changed the name of the initiator?
I will. Can we say the name?
Sure. I think you have to.
Okay. I think so, too. I don't know why we weren't saying it before. Joe Geary had a request from the Observer, whose name I forget.
John Murray.
John Murray.
Thank you very much. And he asked if he could set this in motion. And Joe checked with the Business Office of Facilities, and it was open that night. That's how they arranged it. Can I change the name? Yes. I'll absolutely change the name tomorrow and send out a new form to each of you, so you'll have it with the correct name. It wasn't at his request. He was just, sometimes he gets a call and does things like that. It's including all the parties.
So, it's a request by Mr. Murray?
It is.
Okay. All right. So...
That's certainly more bipartisan.
It's actually, from what I talked to John today, it's tri partisan. And in one case, quattro partisan.
Through the chair.
Yes, John.
Can, can we make sure whoever is doing this, make sure that all the affected parties are properly notified?
Sure.
You know, there are three parties, possibly four individuals, and I certainly like to see all the candidates get an equal opportunity and proper notice.
I'll make sure that happens. Thank you.
Well, I think we have to be careful. I don't, I mean, my --
We can't. That would be incumbent on the board of the debate.
We okay the building. We don't do anything else.
Well, we did okay the setup of the building so that there will be three microphones or four microphones. Whether people attend or not isn't my responsibility.
But, it's not the responsibility of us to decide whether or not the person initiating the use of the building, we tell him who to invite, right?
Mr. Murray can make his own.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, just point of order. My, my point was not to have Mr. Brinker notify the people. My point was to get to Mr. Murray, who's sponsoring the event, to notify the people. So, not, the board doesn't really have anything to do with it. I know that.
I just don't think it's Mr. Brinker's or any school staff's, you know, our role to tell people who they should invite to their meeting. We're just authorizing the use of the building. So, that's my thought, but we can check.
Good point.
Okay. We do have an executive session.
So, we're not going to vote on it, though? I guess it was, I think the underlying point, we're --
Do I have a consensus with the change, with the changes mentioned to move forward with the use of the building?
Yes.
Yes. All this in favor?
I'm just objecting, I'm objecting to point of order, objecting to a consensus at a workshop meeting. It's equivalent to the vote, and it's out of order.
We've actually --
It's still out of order.
You can object.
Still out of order.
All right. Executive session.
Motion to convene an executive session for discussion concerning the employment, 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 performance, evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
And you keep just put a statement in the executive committee on the [inaudible].